Called to order Town of North Branford, WPCA and Town Council meeting Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023 at 7:03 PM. We'll start with the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on my nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. Okay, so we have a public hearing at 7:30, so we will be cognizant of the time for that and make sure that we go into public hearing at the right time there. We're going to start with roll call, please.
Counselor Palamino?
Here.
Counselor Gold?
Here.
Counselor Abelson?
Here.
Counselor Mace?
Here.
Counselor Paligia?
Here.
Counselor Diamond?
Here.
Counselor Anioli?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diopino?
Here.
Mayor McMillan?
Present.
You only have three minutes.
All right.
One person has two.
Item two, I've got to be present. I always say present. This guy's got to come on board. Community events and presentations, are there any? All right, seeing none on two minutes of the previous meeting, I'll accept a motion for September 15th, 2023, special WPCA and regular Town Council meeting.
So moved, second.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Okay. Moving on to Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, item four, correspondence, statements and petitions, are there any? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, unfinished business. I see none there. Moving on to item six, new business discussion in action, item A, 244 Foxon Road, map 22, lot 2, request to connect commercial buildings to sanitary sewers in Totucket Road. Victor, sir, how are you?
Good evening. Hi, how's everybody?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. So in your online packet, there should have been a drawing presented there. I've made a full-size copy for you in case anybody wanted to take a look at it tonight and left it with your packet on your desk. The request to connect to sanitary sewers, again, is at 244 Foxon Road. The property owner and representative of Totucket Land Holdings LLC is here tonight, Don Capelli. Again, the proposal is to connect the subject property to the existing sanitary sewer main in Totucket Road. The proposal is to connect two new proposed commercial contractor storage buildings. The combined square footage of those two buildings would be 9,500 square feet, which would tally into the special connection fee for those two buildings to connect would be $30,000. And again, that's based on the square footage, the proposed square footage of the buildings. The existing sanitary sewer main, again, is the three-inch force main that we've previously discussed on the other mobile home RV project in the area. That existing line was extended down to this portion of Totucket Road along this frontage of the property for a potential future connection, and that's what they're here for tonight, for this presentation. The annual sewer use fee would be based on the actual water usage that happens on the property, which the Regional Water Authority reports to my department at the end of the year. And I prepared a draft motion for your consideration, which the town attorney has also had a chance to review. Again, if you have any questions on the project itself, I could probably answer most of them, but Don Capelli is also here. Yes?
Sir, there's an existing five-day garage that's on the property?
There is, yes.
Is that going to be connected also?
It's not being proposed as a connection as part of this project, so any future connection that they'd want to make on the property, they'd have to come before this commission again. It's currently hooked up to an existing septic system that I don't think they have any problems with.
How does everyone feel about that? Any questions from Mr. Capelli or for Victor?
I guess I have my usual question. Is our sewer system able to handle all these constant?
Right, so with the recent analysis on the system, there's not enough flow coming from this type of development to surpass the available capacity in the system. There's still plenty of capacity in that system, right?
So I'm just a little confused because in the motion, it's talking about 4,000 per age-restricted residential unit for the first five units?
Did I leave?
So, but these are commercial storage units, right? They're not age-restricted?
No, that sounds like something that could be a whole home park.
It's number two.
I see it.
So... So the $30,000, I believe, is still correct based on the square footage of the commercial units. It's just what should not be included in this motion.
Give me a minute to make a cross off, yeah?
Yeah.
Probably get it right.
So if we, in line four on number two there, we can cross out per age-restricted residential? Oh, no, just cross out age-restricted residential, and then it would be per unit for the first five.
Oh, okay, so we're just going to delete that age-restricted residential.
Because it's still based on a per unit.
It's 4,000 per unit for the first five units on the commercial building?
Yes.
Okay. So you have that? Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion... To make the motion as presented with a correction on item number two, to eliminate item four, the words "age-restricted residential." Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. All right, any discussion?
Yeah. I have a question.
Just out of curiosity, I just had a question. When you're at the corner of Foxon Road and Totucket, isn't the mechanic shop still there?
The... So the mechanic shop is another...
Walt's one?
The five-day existing garage.
So that's this one here? This is the corner of Route 80 in Totucket, right? So isn't that garage right here?
No, it's the one.
So it is that one?
Yeah, that's the existing.
It's behind the trailer park?
No, no, no. No, this fronts, we front Route 80 here, Totucket here. There's a brown house here right now. Used to be a white house there. We demoed this one. This building's remaining.
So where's the trailer park?
Over here.
Oh.
There's a portion of that back here.
Oh, I thought this was in here.
No, no, those were parking spaces.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks. Thank you.
That's good clarification. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Passed. Thank you. Mr. Capelli, thank you for being here tonight. Okay, on to... Okay, on to item seven. We're going to run through these relatively quickly. We're going to move the reports of committees, boards, commissions, typically to the second meeting in the month. I know, Michael, you and I talked about this earlier, and I couldn't remember if it was the first or second more appropriate.
Yeah.
We're going to go with the second because we believe more commissions will come along. But in the spirit of it being on the agenda, we're going to run through it very briefly because I believe there may be one or two commissions that have some updates. So item A, Economic Development Commission.
Economic Development Commission met. A lot of the updates have been covered under Town Manager Reports, such as Business Under the Big Tent went really well, party pill ribbon cutting, such like that. Biggest one on here that I see that I'm excited for that's coming up, they're working on that restaurant week. They've began canvassing for restaurants. There are several that are interested, some enthusiastically, which is great to hear. Challenge is going to be incorporating restaurants that are not your standard sit-down, but that's being worked on. And that's about the biggest one for that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, on to item B, Parks Rec.
Park and Recreation met September, whatever that last Tuesday was. Not much is going on. They do have... The pickleball courts are being used extensively, and there have been some tournaments there. So they are going to be looking at rental fees if anyone, you know, moving forward for that. So that was one, that's the biggest item that they're working at right now.
Right, love it. Okay, item C, Police Commission.
The next meeting is next Tuesday, the 10th.
Thank you. Item D, Fire Commission.
This Thursday is the next meeting.
Thank you. Item E, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thursday.
Thank you. Item F, Plan and Subcommittee.
Meeting next Tuesday, the 10th.
Okay, we're doing that even though we're doing that before.
Well, it'll depend on how many.
Yeah, how we got there. Okay.
It might get canceled.
Okay, let's figure that out. All right, item G, Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
That committee met last week on September 26th. Public Works, Police and Fire all reported an update on their radio equipment, and they're all supposed to turn in a list by the end of this week of any shortfalls they have for additional equipment. The good news is today, we just heard from the chief that finally Verizon is going to let the town start putting our stuff, our antennas and things, on the tower. They finally agreed to let us do that.
Good.
And so it's supposed to start next week.
The one in Norfolk?
The Norfolk Tower.
The other one's up.
Do we know when we'll be online and when people, like, say someone?
Probably the beginning of December.
Reception? Beginning of December.
I think the beginning of December.
In 2024? Okay, I'm kidding, obviously, but we're hopeful that December 2023, we'll have some reception in the center of Norfolk. Plus, well, obviously, the need for the public safety aspect of communications. Thank you very much for that. Okay, the CIWW eight.
They did meet again in September.
Okay, the Blueprint Committee, I know there's an update there.
Yeah, the Blueprint Committee met on Thursday, September 28th. The main item on the agenda was to put together a...
Mission statement.
Mike, give us a second. And we actually have a draft that we're all reviewing till the next meeting. And then we also briefly looked at town properties, a list of town properties that Mike provided for us all to look through. That was pretty much the meeting. Bruce, you have anything you want to add to that?
Good, okay, thank you. I think that's exciting to see the outcomes of that meeting, those meetings. All right, item eight, Town Manager Report, A, General Updates. Mike, you have four and a half seconds.
Four and a half seconds. Sorry, so pardon my voice. I'm starting to lose it a little bit, so I apologize. I'll try to keep it together for you. So first, today I was pleased to be on hand for the ribbon-cutting ceremony to welcome Spark Cycle Works here to North Branford along with Mayor McMillan, Sheriff Representative Vincent Candelora, State Senator Christine Cohen, Assistant Town Manager Rory Burke, as well as D. Jacob of the Shoreline Chamber. I've mentioned Spark here before. They recently relocated from Branford. They design and manufacture proprietary e-bikes that are more akin to mopeds, and they featured their products at our recent Business Under the Big Tent event on the eve of Poco and stole the show with your unique products and their owner's vision. And we're thrilled to welcome them here to North Branford, and you can learn more about them at their website, sparkcyceworks.com. We're also welcoming to more new businesses to North Branford. Central Cafe has opened in Central Plaza. It's a neighborhood bar featuring craft beer, cocktails and wine. And Kiki's Grab and Go Kitchen on Middletown Avenue in Norfolk, featuring homestyle breakfast, lunch and dinner, and grab-and-go meals, coffee, ice cream and more. And we'll be looking to do welcoming events with them in the near future. Shoreline Chamber is holding their annual Fall Festival. That's going to be taking place on Saturday, October 14th, at the Guilford Fairgrounds. The festival runs from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and visitors can enjoy a festival atmosphere of live entertainment, kids, activities, food tents, businesses and craft exhibitors. Library Department's putting out a presentation entitled Why Choose Community College with Bernard Shea, recruitment specialist of the Connecticut State Community Colleges. The forum is being held twice, one at Smith Library on October 5th at 6:30 PM and one at Atwater Library on October 11th at 6:30 PM. Park and Rec has some Fall Halloween events coming up, Trunk Retreat. The Park and Rec Department is gearing up to put their annual Trunk Retreat event on for kids. The event is at Stanley T. Williams Community Center from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, Saturday, October 14th. Rain or Shine, and also on the 14th, Park and Rec is in partnership with the Lord of Ribraries and hosting the Haunted Cinema Drive-In at 7:00 PM at Totucket Valley Park. And $20 per car pre-registration and $25 at the door. You can register at NBrecreation.com. And there will be a sensory-friendly pumpkin patch party for individuals with special needs, ages 12 and under, at the Stanley T. Williams Community Center on October 22nd, where kids can pick a pumpkin from an accessible patch and decorate it with friends. The event is from 10:00 to noon. Lastly, I have some sad news to share. I learned of the passing yesterday of Paul Proto. Paul lived in town on Valley Road for many years. He worked in IT and had moved to the town of Madison in recent years. He was the younger brother of State Republican Party Chairman Ben Proto, and he served on this town council with me from 1999 to 2001. So someone on the council who'll go back a while will remember Paul. And our thoughts and prayers go out to the Proto family at this difficult time. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Mike, did you say that that cafe in the Central Plaza was open?
Yeah.
Because my wife and I went there to patronize them the other night. They were closed.
They just opened up?
I think they were doing like a soft opening.
Yeah.
That means like they're still getting their feet on it.
Yeah, a soft opening generally means if they saw you coming, they pulled the shade down.
Didn't have that kind of volume.
No, we wanted to patronize. My wife says, come on, they just opened. Patronizing.
But I think they're also in the process of applying for their liquor license because I saw that published in the Sound, so I'm not quite so sure. I don't know if they have that yet.
They're not going to have to walk out.
Well, considering if it's going to be a bar or alcohol.
Well, we wanted to patronize them because they were new.
That's very nice.
Yes.
And if I was not mistaken, I thought I heard they're not having food, right?
I think it's a BYO.
I think their plan is to eventually have, I think their plan is to eventually have that there. That's what I was led to believe, but...
It's a neat concept from what I read. So hopefully we all.
They're going to be there in the old central pizza.
Yeah. Yeah, should be interesting. Paul, we look forward to their full opening and patronizing them, as you said. Okay, on to item B, Permanent Projects Building Committee, sir?
Very good. Stanley T. Williams Community Center, the roof is completed, the punch list is finished, and the project is considered complete. North Branford Police Department, the slab for the Sally Port is being poured this week. Exterior framing and roof rafters are being installed, and the roofing is scheduled to start the week of October 9th, and the project remains on schedule to date. North Branford High School, the work on the punch list continues. The footings and foundations for Phase Two are set, and the setting of the steel continues, and drainage work and dewatering of the old basement is continuing. NBIS, the brick repointing continues, and a schedule is set in place to continue repointing while school is in session as they are only doing quiet work when the school is actually being occupied, when the school's in session. That concludes my report on the BPC.
Thank you, sir. And the triumphant return of the COVID updates, item C?
Yes, so I'm bringing back the COVID-19 update in this report by request, and certainly as it's timely, there has been a spike in COVID cases in our region. In your folders this evening, the council will find the East Shore District Health Department's EPI report, which was issued today. It gives an update on COVID influenza and respiratory disease. Unfortunately, the State Department of Public Health does not track town-by-town confirmed COVID cases any longer, so at this point, our best way to track upticks in COVID-19 is the hospitalization matter. This report confirms that a large week-over-week increase in hospitalizations is taking place in New Haven County. A 54.1% increase in hospital admissions for COVID-19 over the prior week. This increase implies at least moderate community transmission, which means now is a good time to use prevention methods. Current hospitalization rates in Connecticut in the over-65 age population are currently higher than the two earliest years of the pandemic, excuse me, the two earliest years of the pandemic, while still lower than the rates of the 21 to 22 surge. It's important to note that immunity from prior infection and prior vaccination wanes over time, so it's a good time to get a new COVID vaccine if you have not already done so. Health District reminds us that if we have COVID-19-like symptoms, you should test yourself and isolate. If your test comes back positive, they recommend isolation for a minimum of five days and wearing a mask for 10 days around others. They're currently low statewide case rates for both flu and RSV, and we now have vaccines available for all three of those major respiratory illnesses. East Shore District Health is holding flu clinics and COVID clinics throughout the fall. Upcoming clinics include Thursday, October 12th, from 12:50 PM at the Old Stone Church in East Haven; Monday, October 16th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Branford Community House on Church Street. This one's by appointment only. And then one here Friday, October 27th, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Stanley T. Williams Community Center, and walk-ins are welcome at that one. East Shore District Health is also conducting COVID-19 clinics at their offices at 688 East Main Street in Branford on October 4th, 11th, 23rd and 26th. More information on their clinics is available at their website, www.esdhd.org, and we will also have this information posted on our town website shortly. Those coming out for immunizations should bring their insurance card, COVID-19 immunization cards, and wear short sleeves so their arm is accessible. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Okay, on to item nine, systems, statements, petitions and correspondence. I'll ask that if we, due to the timing of the public hearing, I'm going to ask that the comments be no more than three minutes, and you state your name and address, please.
Bill Savistano, Sunnyside Drive. In reference to a lot of these RFPs queues that you got there tonight. I've followed a lot of this up, and it seems like the interview room and maybe the furniture for the police station, those are, I understand, a big process. But were they under the bonding? Or is it, I understand that the furniture was forgotten. There were some minutes that went back and forth.
It's all under the bonding.
Yeah, it's under the bonding.
Even the furniture?
Yep.
Okay.
Which was not increased.
And also, a lot of talk about the generator, but there's no information in the packet.
Because the bid was just opened today, so we do have information at our.
So you had information there?
Yes, we knew it was coming.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other correspondence, systems and statements? All right, seeing none, we're going to move into item 10, Resignations and Appointments. Item A, Appointment of Karen, is it Jack Blowski?
Jack Blowski.
Jack Blowski, thank you. Democrat, Solid and Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee. As a regular member, term to expire 12/31/2024, resume attached.
I, I wouldn't move the motion.
I'm sorry?
I didn't know. I got, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I distracted her.
I got distracted.
Oh my God.
You would like to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Diamond. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Angeloni. You have a motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that I think she has, Karen has outstanding credentials. I think she would really offer a lot to that committee. And I thank Mike for giving us that information so that we could pursue it and talk to her. And I've talked to her a few times, and I think she has a lot to offer.
That's great. Okay, any other statement or any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? All right, thank you, Karen, for joining Solid and Hazardous Recycling. Appreciate that. Item B, Appointment of William Del Camer, Democrat, at the Board of Fire Commissions to replace Edmund Premier, term to expire 12/1/2024, resume attached.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Any discussion?
I would also like to say something. I think Willie offers a lot to this town. He cares about this town. He's lived in this town his entire life. He believes in public safety, and I think he'll be an asset to that commission.
I agree. I've known Will my entire life as well, or his entire life for that matter, and I think he brings a lot of value. He comes from a family that has background in fire department, although he's not a member himself. He definitely has a great deal of understanding, so I think he's going to bring great value to your commission, and I look forward to continued working together and all the commissions, and thank him for his raising his hand in this matter. All right, so that being said, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? All right, Will, thank you very much. Welcome to the Board of Fire Commissions. Item C, Appointment of Melissa Pantello, a Pantellio, IT, as alternate to the Blueprint Committee, representative of Economic Development Commission. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Gold?
Gold?
Okay, seconded by Counselor Gold. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Okay. All right, so we got through there. We're going to go to item 11, unfinished business discussion in action. I see none. We have about two minutes here. We can't start the public hearing early.
How about if I read the notice?
Yeah, why don't you, if you wouldn't mind reading the notice for us, I was going to ask you. Let's do that.
I'll read slowly so that maybe we can get to 7:30.
Not too slow.
All right, Notice of Public Hearing. The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Fall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on Proposed Ordinance Number 2023-6, entitled Veteran Service Commission, as summarized below. The purpose of this new ordinance is to establish a commission to oversee, create and support events that celebrate the veteran community in North Branford. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and posted on the town's website. Dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this 15th day of September, 2023, Lisa Valenti, MMC, North Branford Town Clerk, email public comments to public-commons@townofnorthbranfordconnecticut.com. Publication date was September 28th, 2023, in the Sound.
Okay, all right, thank you. So seeing that it is now 7:30, we can open up the public hearing. So as I, that was read by the public notice, a 7:00 PM public hearing, Proposed Ordinance 2023-6, entitled Veteran Service Commission. The floor is open for those who would like to comment. Again, I ask to keep those comments relatively brief, three to five minutes, please, and state name and address.
Bill Savistano, Sunnyside Drive. I take exception to that comment because I'm going to tell you in a minute, we've been waiting eight years for this. So, so a little background here, 10 years ago, the House put a bill up, and the towns were asked to set up a Veterans Council. They could do it a couple of ways. I suggest a way by the House or an alternative, which they also suggest. Mike has set up something that's equally as good, I'm sure, and here we are. So the problem was, I guess, I didn't hear about it for the first couple of years, and I only found out about it when West Haven had the council approved, commission approved, and it was in the newspaper. And there was a coordinator set up, and I think we're working, Kathy is our coordinator now, and she's a third person. So that person was supposed to set up this thing, so it never happened because we had the pandemic and everything. But I just, I'm in favor, obviously. But I'm sure they're going to have minutes, and they're going to post an agenda, the whole public comment, I'm sure. I know they're probably only going to meet three or four times a year. We're not creating a wheel here. But I did want to ask, since you're going to set up a whole commission, how are you going to recruit eight people? Now, I understand reading your material. You know, two people from each side of town, stuff like that, but how are you actually going to do it? You going to put an ad in the paper? I know we're not supposed to ask a question, but if you don't want to answer, fine. Maybe you can explain in other ways, but that's my only concern. And the reason I say that, because we've been, at least I have been, not too many people speak about this, but asking for a younger committee. I was certainly available five years ago with Armani Commission, so I can't serve. But I have a couple of people or ideas who, people in town that might be interested. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just to add comment to that, so I do believe this is an important commission. We've talked about this a great deal. I do have concerns that eight may be too many to get to raise their hand to do this just because, you know, it's not going to be time-consuming, but still, it's hard to get volunteers. So I do have concerns there. I also have concerns that if you're on this committee, you can't be on another committee. So I think some, like you said, Bill, you're on another committee, and you do a great job on your committee, but you would be great to be serving on this as well. So as we develop this, maybe it's something that we can look to change in the future as we change other things in committees. And that's something we'll certainly take into account. But there are younger folks out there that are interested. I happened to spoke to a young man that was in, working at the Durham Fair. He's a North Branford resident, and he was selling shirts that were Patriot kind of related shirts, I should say. And he raised his hand to me. And he raised his hand to me, and I hope he steps forward to, and I'm hoping if he can hear this where someone knows his name, I didn't get his name unfortunately, can, you know, raise his hand to be part of this commission. And I asked him to, to reach out to you, Mike, to do so. Hopefully he'll do that. But, you know, take this as a note to reach out to your, to your peers and people that may be interested, and we'd like them to talk.
Can't we, once this is formed, and we're looking for people, can't we also put a notice on, say, town website?
Absolutely.
Social media, things like that, so that, you know, the word can spread out there?
Yeah, I think we certainly can.
Well, we can, because this isn't approved yet, we can make adjustments to the number of people. So if we feel that it should be less, a lesser number, because I am concerned about that also, having eight, we could have a lesser number.
That requirement of either being a veteran or a family. It's, it's not just.
Right, it's either you're a veteran, or you have a family member that was.
You're already limiting, you know?
So it's a, it's a very limited pool.
It is, limited pool. I, I think if you were gonna do eight, you might wanna look towards maybe four to six regular members, and then the others being alternates. Only the fact that, you know, you wanna hit quorum. And sometimes it's tough to hit quorum when you have eight. So I, you know, I know Mike put a great deal of effort into this, putting this together, and I applaud your effort in doing this. I think it's, it's fantastic you actually rammed the ball on this. Mike, was there any specific reason you came up with the number eight before we?
Eight was, you know, there wasn't any mystical numeric reason, of course. But the way I kind of visualized it was, I was, I was, I kinda had a VFW post in mind, you know, where you had the regular members of a VFW who would be the veterans. And then, of course, like anybody who's had experience with a VFW knows that the auxiliaries, of course, do a lot of the work, very often do a lot of, almost all the administrative stuff in some cases. So you wanted to have that open ability for family members. And, you know, we defined that as, you know, an immediate family member being a spouse, or a child, or a parent that served. That's generally how the auxiliaries are quantified. So that's really what I had in mind. And I think that the, you know, the number eight was just trying to fill out the, the committee. You could have, you know, you could theoretically keep all the veteran members on, but instead have one person who has a family member on, on either side. You could reduce it to six. There's a few ways you could obviously go back, but if the, if the high number is a concern to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with making those adjustments. Cliff, you're more than welcome to come up and talk, by all means. This could be a committee for you. This is a good committee.
I already serve for the city in New Haven, and it's a sad situation. There's only one of, of our eight that lives in the city in New Haven. I'm from this town. We serve Mayor Eliker, and do the ceremonies. And they can't find anybody in the city. If they put a residency requirement in, we're dissolved. Eight is a good number, because you're always gonna have somebody that's, well, if he's still in the service, he might be deployed, or he might be on his orders. And eight is our, about our number. But it's the usual same four or five, just like any other commission anywhere else that are active. We just had a Zoom meeting the other night. And that, that helps, because we're, we're so spread out that we Zoom meeting works. But again, we're getting ready for Veterans Day in the City Hall of New Haven. And we're going constantly. We meet once the first Monday of every month, and it takes a lot to get a ceremony together. And it's not the big details, I mean, we've gotten, you have to get color guards. So when you have eight, you can task, well, you get the color guards, you get the city in New Haven to supply electricity for the podium. It's, it's the little things that'll ruin your ceremonies. Eight, you can spread the task out, nobody's overwhelmed. And you're gonna have, you're gonna need, like Rose suggested, alternates that can fill in for one of the full-time members. So from our city experience, I'd like to say we're successful. It's a hard draw in the city to get anybody to come to a ceremony. If you're not having a parade, you're not interesting. And, and like the barrier I was talking about between us older vets and the young kids, this thing here on their, you can't break that electronic barrier. They don't intermingle, they, they're not super social, you know? And it's hard. So if you get anybody that even wants to, yeah, you should really grasp onto them, because they live, I don't know, they just live life differently. I mean, we, we socially challenged each other when I was still in, you know? Hey, you know, the radio stunk this week. And, you know, between the, the operations people, and we would have a couple beers and talk. Now, the, the people that are still serving in the garden stuff, 4:30, they're out of there. And so it's hard to tell about your social events when you don't have a network. So again, I think that's a pretty good number. Because once you get busy, you can't put it all on one or two, three people.
I agree with that. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So in New Haven, what, what other, so obviously Veterans Day and some other flag days and other ceremonies such as that, but did New Haven's veteran committee have anything to do with the St. Patrick's Parade? I know that there's.
Yes, yeah, well, in the way we've been successful, I don't know if you know Charlie Pickett. He, he's a teacher in New Haven, but he's also served. He's formed a VFW, he's formed an American Legion, because he had two twin sisters. One was allowed to serve in combat, but the other was not, because you can't have two family members. So the one sister was involved with the VFW, and the other sister felt left out. Charlie formed an American Legion, you've got us 70-year-olds, and you got the high, the 20 and 30-year-olds. He's been successful. So what we've done to make our parades, yes, we, we show up at the parade, but our banner is both groups.
Gotcha.
So we get enough of a volume that we're, we're actually calling ourselves the New Haven Veterans, because we're not stereotyping who, who can't. The American Legion's for people that haven't served in combat. The VFW is veteran of foreign wars. So again, but again, it's, Trinity Restaurant has been fantastic. Veterans Day, can I do a little plug? We're doing an SOS breakfast at Trinity Restaurant. I'll be serving SOS that morning before, because we're trying to get the veterans in the city to go forward to the ceremony. Charlie comes up with these ideas, and they're popular.
Everyone knows what SOS means, but it's a four-letter word on a shingle.
Sweetness on something.
Yeah.
It, it tests the limits of your stomach. So it, but it's just a way, I mean, so this is where you're gonna need a group that can come up with ideas. You're gonna need the youth that can think. And you're gonna need the people to help do the work. So I suggest eight with alternates, and.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
We have a fairly strong Cub Scout and Boy Scout.
Yeah.
Troops in, in town. Do you see anywhere that we could include them to start bringing younger people into this?
Perfect. When you have a Veterans Day or a Memorial Day ceremony, have them be part of your flag group. Have them march with you. You know, you be maybe the leading group, or let them lead. Start them young, because it'll round them out, make them better people. I was a spoiled brat until I got into service. Mom was doing my laundry, I mean, I didn't know what was. I needed the service, I needed the service.
Cliff, are you doing your laundry now?
I don't know.
Do we have to ask Mrs. Potter that question?
Yes, I am, matter of fact.
I'm glad. I have a question, actually, we're gonna come back to it, but ask our, our town attorney. Could this be opened, do we have the ability to open this up to town employees? They may not live in town, but work in town?
If you changed its membership, sure.
I mean, yeah, you're not helping.
You're same commission, you wanna have additional members?
No, not additional. I mean, I'm just trying to how to get this rounded out, but. And do we have, I remember Memorial Day, part of this commission?
Yep.
It is, right? I would think so. So like someone like Gina, who doesn't live in town anymore, but has done a great deal of work and an excellent job in conjunction with other folks, I would think that maybe that could be interesting to her. So that's why I'm asking that question.
Mike, if we were, I, I.
No.
Not to throw a complete monkey wrench in it, but what if we changed it to like the Veteran Appreciation Commission rather than Veteran Service Commission? Would that matter? And then you could incorporate people that were willing to, you know, honor the veterans and stuff like that, and it would open up a pool and kinda do what we're talking about. And you don't have to change the name, you could just change the requirements, but.
I didn't actually intend, the, the word veterans service wasn't meant to imply the service of veterans. It was actually just meant to imply service to the veterans.
To the veterans.
By the committee.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, you, you know, you've got, I've talked to Bruce, you know, a very long time, you know, he, he's on fire.
You should do this one.
And again, he, you know, he's got, he's got skin in the game, but he's held back because he serves the community this way. So somehow, the charter's gotta be changed, so that people that really would be useful to your group can be part of your group. You don't wanna just plug people in because they meet all the little buzzwords. You want people that wanna work with you.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Other than the charter revision, is there a legal way? Do you know how to, that we could do it without having? Or is that really so cut, itched, and stoned that hurts you?
So I couldn't, I couldn't serve on it, because I'm already on, I'm on board, basically.
Yeah, because you're, yeah.
If they're commission members, they can't be on it, right?
Correct.
Correct.
But if we, if we rename it not a commission.
Task force.
Task force.
Now, we talked about this, we talked about this.
It doesn't really matter what.
It doesn't matter what they're called.
It's still gonna be held back by.
Restriction of the charter.
It's a charter thing, it's not a.
Yeah.
I could still be part of it. I could be a volunteer and not be a member.
A member, yeah. Can we have associate members that don't fall under the charter?
We have ex officio members.
You can have a town council representative, just like there is a leasing firm.
All right, we got a lot, a lot of.
The attorney's gonna check about associate members.
Well, not, no, no, not. You can have ex officio members if you wanted, you know?
I can't spell that one.
Non-voting, ex officio members, for instance, if you wanna go around, if you wanted to.
I think we, we've kind of had some chatter up here to reorganize this to be six members and have maybe some alternate on top of it? Or five and three? Five, five permanent, three alternate?
Your core group.
And then we could always have, we could always have the ex officios as well.
Because your charter, as you know, Mr. Mayor, Charter Section 10-3 Conflict of Offices states that no person shall hold more than one elective or council-appointed office position or committee membership at the same time in the town of North Branford, except notary public or justice of the peace, or membership on a joint board, commissioner, committee. And you cannot hold incompatible offices.
Unless.
So if you have ex officio members that are not full members and non-voting members.
But they can be worker bees.
Yeah, that's what you need, yeah, oh, yeah.
Anyone can volunteer to work with a committee, anyone can volunteer, you could be a, a fire.
I mean, the reality is, there's not a lot of voting that's gonna go on in this. It's more the need for the worker bee.
It's ceremonial, it's gonna be ceremonial more than anything. You're gonna be, your busiest times are gonna be Flag Day, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and.
All right, so let's, let's reword this. Mr. Potter, thank you very much for your, your thoughts. I truly appreciate you coming up and sharing that with us. That was very helpful. So do we have to close the public hearing before we, yeah, I think we do. Okay, so is there any other public comment before we close the public hearing? And we'll, we'll discuss that within new business?
Were, were there any email comments that were sent in?
Ask that same question.
Negative.
Good job.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Before we close it.
No, it's very good. That's a good thing. Okay, so I'll accept motion to close the public.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Abelson? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Code, my ears aren't working over there. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, or out of public hearing? Onto item 12, new business discussion in action. Item A, creation of Veteran Service Commission. All right, let's talk about that. So we talked about renumbering this, which I do think makes sense. And putting it as a five and three methodology, five permanent, three alternate members, thus still getting us to the eight that was desired, but being able to have quorum.
So just before we, we can discuss that, but we wouldn't actually vote on all of that tonight, right? Because do you have to go back and have it put together, or we can just?
Now, you, you can, someone can make a motion to establish an ordinance, you know, set forth, second it, and then you can do it by amendments if you wanted tonight, to amend the numbers and then vote on it tonight. Or you can just move it, have a discuss, second, have a discussion, and then table it and come back to it. Maybe have a substance.
Well, the only reason I asked is because there was this, at the end, it's the whole thing about membership and terms of office, and, and I don't know if Lisa put this together.
No, I did, I actually wrote this.
You did?
I wrote it so that you'd have a continuity. If we had everyone expiring the same time.
Right.
Why have some three-year, two-year, one-years, then it, you know?
Right, and then.
Otherwise.
So that's why I didn't know if all that had to be like we've done. And if we talked about it and said, this is what we want, and then it's reworded, and it comes back to us at our next meeting, and we just vote on it, rather than trying to make it.
I think that might be cleaner to do it that way.
Sounds like you're gonna make a lot of amendments.
Why don't we do that?
Can I raise a point of order?
Yes, sir.
And we table it to the next meeting, so they could redraft it, so that we have a better understanding of it?
Well, we have to, we have to let them know what we want them to put in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna vote on it, today's the 3rd, on the 17th.
Correct, the next meeting we'll vote on it.
Just table it to the October 17th.
Well, once we know what we're gonna do, we'll do that.
Yeah, okay.
We'll table it, okay. All right, so are we in favor of moving it to a five and three methodology? Is everyone, lots of bits there? Good there, okay, so Brian, we're gonna change it to.
Five regular, three alternate?
Five regular, three alternate, do we need to have sides of town, or?
I wouldn't.
I don't, I think.
Why would you want?
That's fine, I, I wouldn't want that.
You don't wanna make it more difficult?
No, absolutely. Let's make it as easy as possible.
Let's just keep it open.
Yeah, keep it open.
Do you still want a requirement that a certain number of people are a veteran or a family member is a veteran, or are you eliminating that?
I would, I would suggest we don't do that. But again, it's up to the, the likes of the body. I would say no to that. I think if you're, if you're a veteran or a family member, it's an out of the.
It's a minority.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should have a certain number.
Yeah.
Either veteran or family member. So out of the eight.
Yeah.
We should have a certain percentage of them be a veteran or a family member. And then the rest can be just.
Why don't we do three? Three people that are either veteran or veteran adjacent, and then everyone else can be open? Everyone look good on that one? Okay, so we'll do three. And then how does everyone feel about allowing people that work for the town of North Branford versus live in the town of North Branford?
Can I ask you a question of the three, regular or, or alternates, or three of the five must be veterans or have a family member who's a veteran? How do you mind if?
I'd say three of the five as well, yeah, three of the five.
I guess the question I would have, what happens if, I mean, you were, you're gonna make this statement, and then the only people that volunteer or put their name in the hat, you might say, have no affiliation with a veteran? I mean, I don't know that we need, I don't, because I think if there's veterans out there or veterans, families of veterans, they're gonna come forward if they want.
I agree. I agree.
Right, I would think.
It also gets a little unwieldy, because if you're gonna do staggered terms, how do you stagger them so your three veterans aren't the ones that are all off, and you can end up with...
No veterans.
It can be tough to manage, and remember, you're gonna approve this commission too.
Right, we select them.
Again, I, I think, I personally feel that if you have, if you have a calling to work with the, you know, the work in this kind of environment, regardless if you're a veteran or a veteran adjacent, I think you should be able to do this. I think there's some people that maybe tend to have the opportunity to serve and look at these types of opportunities as ways to give back and to have service to our, our country and to folks that didn't serve and to honor them. So for me, I feel like if you wanna get on something like this and do the work, you should be able to do so. That's how I feel.
I disagree. I'd disagree with that. I think it should, I think it should at least be a relative of a veteran. I mean, it is a veteran's service commission. You're gonna find that more people are more passionate, who are other relatives.
Or veterans.
I am very passionate about this, okay? Because I'm a family member of few veterans, but, um, so, yeah, I, they have to be either veterans or...
That's what I would say, as a veteran, that's what I would say.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's fine. And I think three, I, just putting myself in, in the shoes of, of the members, I think that three out of five is important so that the majority is representing, you know, the majority has served or has a connection to somebody that's served. This way, they, they've experienced themselves and they, they just bring a different perspective to it. Absolutely. I mean, good.
I find a lot of veterans out there already belong to either a VFW or a NERF post legion. I don't know how doing this here right now is gonna tap into them if they're already part of something else. I think like what Cliff said, you know, American Post is more generally populated, maybe they wanna start thinking about doing an American Post Legion in town as opposed to something like this here, where you can get the actual veterans involved and then they go and bring their guests in. But a lot of guys out there and a lot of women out there that have already got discharged and they've been around for a long time, they already belong to something, they all belong to something, everybody, Bill, you know, belongs to something, you all belong to something, so maybe American Post is more predictable with the veterans than it is a service organization or a commission or people, five people sitting... Bill, how many people would be in that parade?
A handful.
Yeah, see, now, that's the thing for veterans, you know, and we always have a handful of veterans.
I hear where you're coming from. The parade has a handful of people that don't necessarily wanna, but I, I know I had a badge of my father to be in the parade, and my father's a pretty decorated person.
Did you ever belong to something?
No, he doesn't.
An American Post or anything? No, I'm not.
Not anymore. He was a VFW when we had one here, I think, for a little while, but it's not something that he likes to, you know, he, he knows what he did and that's what he does, but he's pretty highly decorated, so I thought it was important for him to be recognized. But that said, I'll, I'll take another side of things, is that when, when Jerome Harrison has their event, I know you know this because you've been there with me, but when Jerome Harrison has their event on Veterans Day, which is probably my favorite event all year in North Branford, 'cause you get to see all these kids, you know, pay service to the veterans, and there's a lot of folks that come out and show up there. I don't know if they're all...
They all, they all don't live in town.
Yeah, it's probably because they're, they're...
A lot of them from East Bay and in Branford and their grandparents.
There's a good amount of folks.
But that is a great thing, I agree.
So I, I like Vince's idea, but we need to start somewhere.
Give it a shot, right?
And see where it goes.
Yeah, we can certainly dissolve the commission if needed.
But what's the harm, what's the harm of having it open and see who, who, who's interested, and then we make a selection from there? We have, you know...
I, I just think there's a problem like Cliff and Bill said with the younger generation.
Yeah.
Even the, even the post I belong to, they're, it's all the old guys that are doing all the work, but they can't get the younger people in.
And I understand that, but the more restrictive we make it, the, the less likely we're gonna have people volunteering. So if we left it open, then, you know, if, hopefully people, veterans or family of, of, you know, veterans would, would apply or put their name in, you know, forward.
How do you plan on advertising it?
I think we'll probably put something in Toc-Toc at times and definitely on the website.
Yeah, I mean, we were pretty successful actually with the blueprint, you know, we actually got some, some new blood out for, for that, and that's, that's kind of like a, a little bit of a, in my mind, a bit of a heavier lift and probably less, has less dynamism associated with it. If I could offer just one perspective too, and, and the idea of, of this and whether to open it up to veterans or not, and I'm hearing what you're, you're saying, I would just hate to see this commission formed and that there be a set of circumstances where no one who was on it was a veteran. But I think there's a lot associated with the veteran community, that there's, there's honors, there's traditions, that laypeople aren't familiar with and frankly don't understand. And that having people who are veterans i- is pretty critical to it, and I could certainly appreciate the scaling back of that, but at least making sure that there is an element that's required, I would, I would, you know, recommend that highly.
Right, and I, and I, I definitely agree with that, but my point is, aren't, aren't we the, the, the group that selects who would be on it?
Right.
If 20 people said, hey, we wanna be on it, we would go through it and decide who we think would like to have on it.
That's about upfront, it's less, I think it's more about the future, like what has, Brian says, as it scales down, and if someone comes to term, you have to replace that person with a veteran. So if you have a vet that scales off, and you wanna replace it, if you don't have someone to replace them, that's, you'd say, so good. Is that less someone, is that less someone who puts their hand up? Puts their hand up, I should say. But again, I, I think...
Then we could think of it another way, is do restrict it. If nobody comes forward, then we open it up. Maybe that's another way.
Well, we did have veterans in Norfolk, and where Dingley Street Wall is, there was a veterans place there.
Yeah, there was for a small period of time.
They wanted to close it up too. They couldn't get the younger generation, they couldn't get the activity. So there has to be something that's gonna be attractive to people to wanna do this here. I don't know what that is, but, you know, I saw the VFW when they first built the building, and then that closed up, and then they had some kind of veterans thing in Norfolk and the Strip Wall, that one they're closing up. So I think this is very commendable, but how do we attract the people to come and do it, you know, and keep them attracted, you know?
I think we oughta put it out there and see what happens.
Yeah, we can always make changes.
Put it out there the way we planned and go with it.
Why don't we look to make the changes stipulated, where we do the three and five, the three and, I'm sorry, five and three, and make three of the five, whether or not they're alternate or not, be veteran, associated or adjacent.
So we're saying that some of them, as of now, could not, not be veterans or relatives of veterans?
Yes, right now, yes, we have said that. So we can open it up.
Under what's been articulated, you're gonna have five regular members and three alternates, with three of the five regular being veterans or family members of veterans. So that means you can have, you can have, you can have five non-military, if you will.
Yes, to put my two bits in again, I, I don't see how somebody that has no relationship to a veteran should be in it, but it's, whatever, yeah.
I honestly think that you're not, you'll maybe get a few, but I don't, I think most of them are going to be family members or veterans.
Yeah, I think most people that end up...
Most of them will be.
Will have something, you know, something. Well, when we say family member, do we mean, you know, relative?
It says parent, child, or spouse.
Yeah, yes, current child or spouse, okay.
So why don't we keep it restricted and see what happens?
We'll always open it.
Yeah.
Another alternative is, another alternative is to make all eight of them either veteran or family member. Don't do it by Norfolk or North Branford, don't require that some be actual veterans versus family members. Just say that of the eight you're going to have, every one of them has to be either a veteran or a family member. That would work, that might be another way to do it.
That's fine.
If we get no Africans, can we address them then?
I'm very open to this, okay. So make that change there. Anything else we wanna change in this?
Are we limited to how many ex officios we can have? Okay.
Because an ex officio is a non-voting member, so if you, you know, you can designate certain people as ex officio and require them to be part of it, or you can just say the commission shall, you know, you should have the freedom to appoint ex officio as you feel appropriate.
That's, I think, what you do.
Yeah, so can you, can we add that in there?
Ex officios with no veteran relationship? Or, or do you want the ex officios also to be a veteran or a family member of a veteran?
I'm more for family members than veterans.
I'm, I'm...
Whatever you want, I'll put the bar to the violence.
Well, let's, let's stick with the veteran or family member as we are with the committee right now and see what's what we get.
And we'll do staggered terms as well.
Yeah.
Which I think is usually a good idea.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna put a, a council member on it?
As an ex officio?
Ex officio. Why not as a regular member?
Yeah, we're on a board and commission.
That's not true, but I'm not...
You can, if you build it with certain, you can put that in the language if you do as a council member. You can be a, a committee member, obviously.
You wanna require a council member then to be a member?
Require them.
Yeah, but...
I'm just, I was...
But that goes against the charter, right?
We, we were putting you there, though.
No, I'm, I'm already, I'm already on one that I'm not supposed to be on.
I mean, I think these are different, I think that those go to the joint committees that he's cited as well, so, you know, for example, the blueprint committee, which is resolution-based...
Yeah.
Is, it, it goes under the same guidelines. Deputy American be on it, you're on it as an ex officio, Councilor Abelson's on it.
That's an exception again.
Because, because it's a required aspect of the committee, or is required to draw on those individuals, economic development has a member, that's the purpose of it. So I mean, if you created this and decided that you wanted to have that as part of the purpose of it, I don't see why they wouldn't be able to...
That's an exception as well. Membership in addition to notary public and justice of the peace, another exception to 10-3 is membership in a joint board, commission, or committee or coordinating body.
So would we have a liaison to it?
That would be a liaison, it wouldn't be...
Well, they would still not...
It would be a liaison.
Which is fine, and they don't have a voting...
Yeah, they don't vote.
Which is fine.
Whatever you want.
But...
I can dress whatever you want.
Yeah, just remember, the more restrictions and things we make, anything, the more difficult it is to maintain, right? It's like, it's like, you know, anytime you have some kind of a...
Let's leave it be.
Yeah, you get too much in there, and then all of a sudden you start, you start losing the ability to fill the spot, so keep it relatively open. You fall out of compliance.
All right, carry on.
All right, so are we good? And Brian, do you have a good idea of what we're looking for here?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's move on.
You want, is there gonna be a motion to table it, I believe?
Yep, I will need a motion to table.
Motion to table until October 17th.
Second.
Motion by Councilor May, seconded by Councilor Zonie, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. Right, that's been tabled. On to item B, review and approval of specification RFP 924004, interview room, recording system, NBPD.
Okay, so I just have a question in regards to this one. Is this taken out because this was moved over to the communication grant? So it's not part of the police department, the actual construction of the police department? This was one of the areas that we moved over into the communication?
Right.
So is that why we're going out to bid on this? That's the, that's my question.
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Is this still under the, the total cost?
Yes.
Yes, well, it's, it's not coming under the police department budget, it's coming under the communication bond.
Right.
We moved it from police over to communications. So it's, it's still part of the original bond amount. We didn't have to bond more or anything, we just moved it from one area.
It was one of the few things, we did move a few things around.
Yeah.
Yes, this was one of all the things in there, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve RFP number 924004, interview room, recording system for the new North Branford PD. Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Zonie, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, thank you. All right, on to item C, review and approval of specification RFP number 924005, wheelchair lift at water memorial library.
I'd like to make a motion to approve RFP 924005, wheelchair lift at water memorial library. Second.
A motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, right, thank you very much. Item D, review and approval of specification for bid number 24111, roof removal and replacement ambulance HQ-DPW.
I'd like to make a motion to, to approve bid number 24111, roof removal and replacement ambulance headquarters, DPW.
Second.
So is this two roofs we're doing? The ambulance building and DPW?
Ask them in, ask them in, in discussion, give me a second.
Okay, we did, give a second.
Yeah, nobody is. Okay, motion by Councilor Zonie, seconded by Councilor Plagea, any discussion? Go ahead, sorry.
So what does that mean, ambulance headquarters, DPW?
That's a, that's a typo, it's a DPW, no.
That's a, that's a typo? Okay, all right, so strike the DPW part of it.
Is that, is the reason why we're replacing it, is because it's 20 years? So it's 20 years?
Correct. Okay, so we're striking the DPW in the motion, that's suffice?
Out of the emotion.
Right, what's the department it comes from?
This is coming from DPW.
Oh, so we keep that?
Well, it's, it's for the, it's for the fire department, it's not for the P, the public.
It's for the ambulance at the request of the DPW?
Correct.
Okay, so we keep that.
Yeah.
Who's up first?
DPW evaluated the roof?
It's, yeah, I mean, it got our ears that, I hope this came from you, right? Because it says, it's coming from Department of Public Works.
How do you want us to, how do you want us to write this one?
So who evaluated the roof?
Both of them, actually, fire and Public Works.
Public Works collaborating this?
So who takes care of the building? Is it the Department of Public Works that takes it?
The roof has to be replaced, that's what you're asking.
Yes.
What's that?
The roof has to, has to be replaced.
So then you did review it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, there we go, okay. It's just simple questions, guys. All right, no worries. So we wanna keep that in the language, just so we can do this right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry, we're just making jokes here. Okay, so as stipulated, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. All right, thank you very much. Onto item E, review and approval of specification for bid number 24113, furniture fixtures and equipment, NBPD.
Okay, so I, just before we go through, is this another one of those things that's not part of the original contract for Newfield?
This is, I believe, part of the original. It's supposed to be included in...
But why are we going out to bid then if it's part of Newfield's contract? That, that's what...
Yeah, that's, that's...
I mean, I know it's...
Yeah, right, it's, it's part of the project, but it's not, it's not inside of what they...
It's not part of Newfield's contract then.
Yeah, I'm sorry, right.
Okay.
It's part of the project, bonded, it's all part of that, there's no additional bonding.
It's not part of the project.
And does this include all the, does this include the equip, the furniture for the EOC room, too?
Yes.
Yes, it said, it said second floor. There was a number of things in this number, just wanted to make sure.
So this is part of that last number we talked about a few months ago?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't increase it.
We didn't increase anything.
We didn't increase it or anything, it's, you have to work with...
This is it?
No. It's not coming in anymore.
Well, there, yeah, there, it's part of the money that we already bonded. We didn't increase it, so they have to work within that number.
Correct.
And now they're putting it out to bid because it's not part of Newfield's contracted price. So they need, there wasn't a number, so they have to go out to bid for it.
Okay, but it's all within purview of what we've bonded.
So I'd like to make a motion...
What's the explanation of equipment? Because there's furniture and equipment. Can you define?
Well, well, everything is listed in the bid specs as to what they're...
Okay, I'll take a little bit of it.
All of the furniture or equipment, the FFNE, it's...
It's in our packet.
It, it's all listed as part of the bid, what exactly they're looking for, where it's going, if it's EOC, if it's whatever. So, I didn't see any art on the wall when I looked at it, so... Okay.
Thank you.
You should have a motion and a second, and then discuss.
Then discussion, okay. So we have, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve specific bid number two-four-one-one-three, furniture fixtures and equipment for the new North Branford PD. Second.
Seconded by Councilor, motion by Councilor Zoni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion or any further discussions in this matter? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstained, okay. All right, onto item F, award of, uh, award of bid for portable generator?
All right, so, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, you'll see before you, I have, uh, everyone's received the packet. Just received all the bids, uh, last night, or with the end of business yesterday, um, and we got two in. You'll recall that you accelerated the process so that we could both go out, create the bid specs, and then go out to bid, so that we could get this before you tonight. We are making a recommendation on accepting the bid from Generators On Demand LLC. You can see the difference in comparison of the two items, and I also noted in, in the memo to you that there's also a difference in, a significant difference in delivery time. The generators on demand would be able to provide it within two weeks, and the competitor would be able to do it in eighteen weeks. So as time is of concern, that's, it's an added concern as well, the cost, so... I'm making a recommendation that, uh, we approve that tonight.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby accepts the bid of Generators On Demand LLC of sixty-one dash one Buttonball Road O'Line for bid number two-four-one-one-two for a portable generator in the amount of seventy-seven thousand five hundred. Second.
Motion by Councilor Zoni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion?
Yes.
Good, Bruce?
So this is for seventy-seven five.
Correct.
We had talked about the specific amounts at the last meeting.
So this is less than that?
Less than that, okay.
And it's a bigger generator, but what we were talking about was one fifty, and this is one seventy-five.
I noticed, so I just, I'm sure about the month.
Yep, that includes, uh, three thousand dollars, that also includes the added warranty, too, so...
Oh, really?
Yep.
Yeah. How many years is that, Mike?
One.
This is a silly question, but includes trailer and all that, right? Obviously, it'd be portable. Includes trailer?
Includes, yeah.
Okay. You surprised, but, you know, not the driver anymore. We're not buying a new truck with this to make it portable, are we? Yeah, so that's some speaking it out.
I, I do have one question. Being that it's significantly different, uh, significantly, significantly less than the other bid, do we know, is it a reputable manufacturer, or is it, it's not like a second-rate company generator, right? Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's very reputable.
Do we know what the make is, or?
MQ, was it MQ?
Okay, and you guys are comfortable with that, obviously. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was Apple.
It's a very good generator.
Okay, that's good. Total win.
I needed, came in lower, that's great. All right, so, um, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstained. All right, so we're going to skip item G and, um, go into item thirteen, because we're gonna go into executive session on item fourteen. So item thirteen... Can I do that without a motion? Can I, we can skip the pass, right? Okay. Um, item thirteen says the statements and petitions. Again, same, again, we have a executive session, so please keep comments to three to five minutes, and state your name and address.
Bill Savage, Town Hall, Sunnyside Drive. Uh, in reference to Karen, you appointed for our committee. I did, uh, we invited her to one of the meetings. I didn't know all the credentials, so I grabbed them in the packet, but it'd be a welcome, uh, person for the committee. And just on here, uh, we do still need another person for that committee. Because there's a few older ones on the committee who would like to maybe move to alternates.
Sunset a little bit.
Yeah.
How many folks you have in that? You have a full committee now, or are you having an open spot?
No, we're one short.
You're one short?
Yeah.
You have enough for all of them?
And we have no alternates.
Okay, okay. How many on that committee? Just remind me?
Nine.
Nine?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a big committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a sizable committee. That's something to look at.
Another subject, I hate to complain, but, uh, gotta pitch a bitch at you. Couple of weeks ago, we had a finance committee meeting, you never posted the agenda. I knew of the meeting, because I'm, I'm here, I pay attention, looking forward to it, because I know you're gonna talk about opera money. So the agenda was never posted until, I didn't hear about the meeting until the following week, when, the last council meeting, when you discussed the generator and everything. So in the next two or three days, I tried to find someone in town hall, made four calls in, in here, to get, get the agenda posted. Because the generator wasn't on that agenda, but I, I know it was last minute because of power went out, so that was probably amended the agenda. But anyway, so now I'm looking forward to the minutes. Minutes never come out, all last week. I called Gina today at two o'clock. She's gotta find them and post them. From time to time, there's, I, I watch the meetings. I don't go to every one, but I watch the minutes. And I gotta tell you, whoever's buying the stores is not doing a good job, because from time to time, it's not there. So whoever's supposed to do that, uh, please, uh, take care of it. Last thing on the, uh, I didn't get up in front of the last thing about the, uh, the Veterans Council. You know, I was one of the ones that helped close up the, the VFW here in North Branford. We, a bunch of us moved over to Branford. It seemed to be, uh, because Branford is bigger, and we got fifteen to twenty guys come out tomorrow nights, Thursdays are meeting. And, uh, we do a little, we send newsletters out and stuff like that to encourage. We get ninety members, but only twenty guys show up. Everybody's older, understandable. My point is here, and from what I understand, and I'm not an expert on anything, but I think the culture in Branford is a little different, meaning it comes from you people up front. Again, I'm not, not an expert, but I'm familiar with Branford because I go to meetings and a lot of stuff I do in there. And it's just that, it, uh, the culture is different, so this is what we gotta improve on somehow. I can't offer suggestions, I don't, I don't have anything for you. I mean, I know personally, uh, there are a few of us that are still in town, we scraped together for the Memorial Day Parade, and, and that's, you know, it's a question. All of a sudden, somebody shows up, we, we get the thing done. But I put ads in the paper, along with the normal flag you see that Frank puts together, encouraging, uh, the veterans to come, to come out. I thought it was a, uh, a mobility thing, meaning myself. I don't, I've been having trouble, you know, walking the last few years. And, uh, so that's how we got involved this past year. We got some, uh, we got some residents that donated some golf carts, so we... But there again, if we have transportation, maybe we can get a few more, but it's about, it's about the culture that, that, I gotta change a little bit, so... Again, let's keep at that. And the last thing on there, in reference to who's on there. You know, again, I'm not gonna harp on this, but what was suggested by the state was, uh, of course, to have a woman and, on the council to represent any women's affairs. And this council, again, you can set it up the way you want it, but according to what the state wanted to do, it was to actually get into some veterans' affairs, that, have that committee available, available for veterans who need help. And they actually suggested that some of the, uh, some of the persons that serve actually take a course. Now, it doesn't go into it any information I have, you can do it online, but, uh, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
I know you talked about putting an ad in the paper, but I think a lot of times that doesn't work. Is there any way the town could compile a veterans list between North Branford and North Branford? There should be a way that we can compile the veterans list, see how many veterans there are, and maybe send them an invitation to come to Town Chambers or some, some evening if they want. I think putting an ad in the Toc-Toc at the time, people just like, a lot of people don't even read all the ads. They read the letters to the editor and the sports and everything else. Maybe we could have, I don't know if Mike could find a way to compile a veterans list so that we can send them a personal invitation, first-class mail. That may work better than trying to put it out in the paper.
I'm, I'm fine with that idea, I don't know how we, we have that kind of data.
First of all, there is a list. The tax assessment has a list.
How's it gonna say that?
Tax assessment has a list.
That notifies the tax assessment.
But a good point here, and, and I'll throw it right back at you guys. One of the best events we have, one of the best events we have in town is the luncheon at STW. We get eighty and ninety people there. There's a few husbands and wives, but it's the, the best turnout of veterans in town. I, I mean, I see guys that, uh, you know, that very seldom come out. Maybe that's the point where you guys make a pitch for this committee.
That's a good thing.
Make it a point to come there, have a speech, see what you can get.
Be happy to do that, okay.
There you go.
I think that's way too good, Joe.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate that, guys, it's great comments. Uh, thank you, Bill, I appreciate you, you coming up and sharing that with us. Okay, any, um, any other comments, citizen statements, petitions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to accept a motion to go into executive session, CGS one dash two hundred, C six A personnel.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Zoni, seconded by Councilor Paldino.
Mr. Chairman, your motion needs to indicate who's going into executive session, please.
To include, uh, town attorney, uh, town manager...
Assistant town manager.
Assistant town manager, oh, sorry, right, I didn't see that. Assistant town manager, anyone else?
Finance director.
Finance director, and that's it, right? Okay, of course, council. Oh, no. All right.
Council has to stay.
You too.
And council, of course. All right, am all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstained. We're in executive session, thank you.
Now we're actually wanting to stand up.